Tonight we've got the Hamilton City Council Merrill Debate where these candidates here will be buying on why they should be getting your first preference votes to be the next Mayor of Hamilton City Council. But with every election, there's always one thing that's stepping in the way of every candidate and that is your vote. Yes. Tonight we've got the Hamilton City Council Merrill Debate where these candidates here will be buying on why they should be getting your first preference votes to be the next Mayor of Hamilton City Council. But with every election, there's always one thing that's stepping in the way of every candidate and that is your vote. Yes. Okay, welcome to tonight's It's in the Ballot Show there. Let's kick off with our candidates' opening statements. They'll get one minute each on why they should be getting that first preference vote for being Mayor. And thank goodness we're back in STV territory. Rachel, you need to go first with your opening statement. Oh, no, no, just stay seated. Otherwise you're going to end up pulling out microphone cables all over the place.
Head for detail, heart for Hamilton. My name is Rachel Corrales. I am a Ham ambassador. This is the community that has shaped me and the community I now seek to serve. Hamilton is hurting. Rates, owners of commercial properties, business, rates and debt have skyrocketed, especially in a cost of living crisis. Ratepayers are not an ATM and debt used lazily becomes a trap. I've been a CEO for eight years, a lawyer for 14, 10 of those representing city councils and a director with over two decades of experience across a broad range of organisations. That's head. During COVID, as part of Cote Pacifica's response, I led my team from the frontline delivering food packages across Hamilton. I've seen the realities that shape our families' lives and I carry that with me and that's heart. I'm independent. I have no ties to any political parties. My only priority is Hamilton. I'm not a politician. I'm here to deliver and I have a track record of execution. Thank you.
Okay, next up, John.
Kia ora, I'm John McDonald. So I'm standing as a serious candidate on the east side and a less serious candidate for mayor. I've got involved in local body politics because I've seen too many cases where Hamilton City Council is providing emotional material instead of objective informative material. But too many cases where council staff and often the councillors are exaggerating the benefits of various proposals and projects. And the downsides are hidden or absent. We've got consultation, which is not informing the public about both sides of projects. And that gets us into situations where we've got obscenely high infrastructure costs, projects that the community doesn't want. And rates and charges going up to pay for it all. So vote for me for simplifying the city. And yeah, thanks.
Okay, next up, Rudy.
Right, I'm Rudy Deploy and I'm a mayoral candidate for Hamilton. The reason why I am taking part in this election is because the situation is so desperate. We cannot just glance over it and excuse it because we've got a city that has not been well managed. At the end of the day, when a city is not well managed, it is actually mismanaged. And that's what we have. We have a council that dispends your money as they want. The reason they do that is because it's your money and not their money. So for that reason, I will bring fiscal responsibility, will cut the rates, will bring them down. But it's a lot to do and it's going to be a tough job. And because it's a tough job, that's why I'm signing up to do exactly that. Rudy Deploy, your mayoral candidate for Hamilton.
Okay, next up, Guy.
Kia ora, my name is Guy Samoni-Sine.
Is your microphone going? We'll restart the clock.
Kia ora, my name is Roy Samoni-Sine. I'm standing for mayor because Hamilton needs a fairer, smarter system. Rates keep climbing up. I would like to introduce a simple plan, which would be a rebate for households and the businesses because companies here and there are. I work through a dealership in Hamilton, so I deal with real people, real budgets, I'm not a financial advisor, I'm not running management. Also, I'm not a political person or a career political person. I've never worked for a municipal council.
Okay, next up, Sarah.
Kia ora, good evening. I'm Sarah Thompson, standing for mayor in for the West Ward. I've been a councillor for six years and I chair our city's strategic growth committee and I previously worked as a lawyer. I'm standing for a city that invests in its water infrastructure so that we can build the homes that we need. A city that works with the police and also our social services to create a safer city for all. And I'm standing to protect our community services, our pools, parks, libraries, events, all of the things that make our city a good place to live. While also maintaining our city to ensure we're looking after what we have. And importantly, a key focus for me will be ensuring our future rates rises are affordable through expanding our shared services. Collaborating with other councils within the Waikato and bringing services in-house where it can save us money and also improve the quality of the work that we do. I'm Sarah and I appreciate your support. Kia ora.
Okay, and next up, Jack.
Jack Gieland is my name, standing for mayoralty in Hamilton East Council. I'm a believer in the Lord Jesus Christ as the King of all kings. And people should vote for me because I stand for vision, responsibility and empowerment. Seeing Hamilton not just as a place to live but as a beacon of innovation, fairness and cultural pride. I am a champion for the people, not just the elites. I will demonstrate responsibility for the rates and spending, finding fresh solutions to real challenges. I stand for fairness and sovereignty with a background in common law equity. Fairness, accountability and justice to council decisions. I am a proven voice of courage. You can phone me at 0376780867 to ask me about policies if you wish to talk to me. So vote for Jack Gieland for a friendlier, happier city. Thank you very much.
And if you want that phone number, feel free to rewind the footage because you can do that.
Kia ora, tato, my name is Tim Mackindoe. For the last 18 months, I've been a city councillor in the East Ward. I was for 12 years DMP for Hamilton West up until 2020. So I guess I am a politician, but one of the things I love about local government is being liberated from party politics and being able to be truly independent and work across party lines or with other colleagues, which I think I've shown I'm able to do. Other candidates have already talked about how deeply in trouble our city is. We are heavily in debt. We have been spending well beyond our capacity to earn the revenue and as a result, we are now in deep trouble. We have to rein things in, focus on our core priorities, stop wasting a lot of money, particularly on a lot of very unpopular roading projects. While protecting the core services and attractions that make our city lovely. We all value our zoo, our museum, our swimming pools, libraries and so on. And we need to make sure that they're well protected while we rein in spending on the other things that at the moment are too expensive and not giving us value for money.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, let's get on to our fun part here where candidates will be answering the box questions. Now, because we are doing fans on the smell of an oily rag, I have both been the role of someone too good at Tenaka Kabushia tonight by sitting down there and also be opening up the boxes and doing that. So each candidate will pick a box number one by one. Our box numbers are between number one, number 28, or if you'd like to request the box number in Tāhui and Rua Kōmāwadu. And the great thing with It's in the Ballot, each candidate here has two button cards, metaphorically speaking. I've learned one thing from doing It's in the Ballot, whether you give them two cards in person or not, let some try to keep using it. So I'll still be keeping a tally here on the sheet here, letting me know exactly who's using their button cards and that sort of thing there. And also each candidate gets one preferred card. If they get a question they do not want to answer, they can always defer it to one of their below candidates. And with the random order sheet, if mate get Tim, you get to pick the first box number. What box number would you like?
I'll go for 28.
Go for 28. Okay, so let's go for that. So box number 28 and we've got B for Bravo. How do you feel about council subsidising private business to give them more equal footing against private competition in other parts of the city?
So private business being subsidised to give them more against other private business.
I think that's what the question is.
Yeah, I'm a bit puzzled by that and in principle, no, I wouldn't support that because private enterprise ought to be able to stand on its own. Right, there'd have to be a compelling reason to do that and I'd listen to it if there was that compelling reason. But in most instances, I don't think council has the ability or the mandate to go subsidising private business. I meant to say more.
Rachel, what's the next box number? Seven, yep, we can get good old Fetho out of the way. Okay, we've got W for the Waikata. I remember not to sit down there and use the phonetic alphabet for this one. How do you think we could increase youth participation in local elections?
I always think with groups like young people or other minority groups that the best starting point is to ask them directly why it is that they are not engaged and then to start to work through those things. I think the best way from experience is actually to get those that these groups actually have established trust with to be asking the questions from the get-go. But at the same time, you know, we obviously want to be building trust as council with young people and other groups. We need to meet people where they are.
Hey, do we have bottom for John? Yep, who do I start off with? Start with John, yep. Bottom for John, yep, go ahead.
We should be making it easier for young people to become homeowners earlier in their lives. And that would help with their increased interest in local body elections. That would involve keeping Hamilton affordable and a well-maintained city with good opportunities and a healthy culture and a pleasant environment. Young people might see more of a future here and invest in taking an interest in local government politics. Ironically, we can expect the new water company, if it's allowed to continue, to increase the interest of university students and local government issues. New waters companies planning to triple or quadruple average household water costs in nine years. Combining that with smart meters separate billing, you can imagine the dramas in a university flat as five flatmates try to divide up a $6,000 annual water bill between them.
Okay, Jack.
We need to engage the youth by bringing the youth council back for our rangatahi. And also increase youth participation by lowering the voting age. Because everyone as a younger person, 16 and upwards, needs to be involved in their own destiny. And we need to make voting compulsory. Plus, we need to educate the young by bringing civics into schools. Also, I put together the game of life for youth people, which is about white light passing through 12 different categories. Because I think we need to be there for our youth, particularly as they go through trauma in life, needing to find jobs and everything else. The whole future has changed with AI and we need to be there for the young because they are our future.
Can I button?
Yeah, okay, we've another button from Sarah.
Right, I think what's really important is that we don't just start with the question of how do we get young people to vote when it's election time. We actually need to spend the whole three years as a council engaging with our young people to get them interested in what council does. And understanding what council does well before we start to go out with voting papers and to say, hey, it's time to vote. And I went to Fairfield College recently and spoke with year 12 students there and we talked about what our council does. And I asked them questions and they were able to ask me questions. I think this next council, we should actually, instead of waiting for government to come out with civics education, get our councillors to take turns to turn up to schools and speak with our year 12 and 13 students. And turn up to universities to work with the professors to actually get time in front of the students in relevant classes as well.
And if you want to sit there and share this footage with any young people, feel free to share it as this show breaks all barriers by suddenly making itself available to voters. Not just while you're watching live, but also right up until election day. Okay, Rudy, you get next box number. What would you like?
All right, let's do 16.
Oh yes, the good old what do you want driver's licence age.
It was last year.
Sorry?
It was last year for me, 16.
Okay, we got O for was it octopus? Can you give an example of an out of the box thinking you'd bring to the table and how will that help the residents of the city?
Can you give me the alphabet number?
O for Oscar or O for Oko, octopus.
Okay, that's helpful. So out of the box is vital, in fact, for any leader to do. So my 10-year plan for Hamilton Lake is an out-of-box thinking situation. It's to make our city shine because that's what out-of-box things will do. Picture in your mind a vibrant lakeside hub, pop-up markets, a floating stage for local artists and eco-friendly boardwalks. All funded through tourism and sponsorships, not rates. This transforms our lake into a community heart, boosting pride, jobs and tourism. As mayor, I'll dream big, uniting Hamiltonians for an outstanding city that we all will love.
Okay, Jack, what's the next box number? Oh, you're about to a button, Rachel.
Can I do a button?
Yeah, you're going to a button before we move on, yep.
It's not actually out of the box thinking because it should already be like this, but it is around consultation and how we engage with our communities. If you look at the low voter turnout, less than 30% in the last cycle. And then also with the recent spike increases, the mood in the community, there is a massive trust issue that needs to be rebuilt as we move forward. And so consultation and how we engage with our communities is an absolute priority. We need to listen. We need to actively listen, genuine dialogue with mandate and with reciprocity and actual follow-through. How will that help residents? It would help to build trust and also give real voice to our people throughout the term, not just during election time.
Okay, Jack, what's the next box number?
Two.
So we've got good old Rua. Okay, we've got F for Foxtrot. Is Hamilton big enough to consider a river ferry service as a transport method?
Yes, we need to increase the traffic to Hamilton in terms of tourism by having riverboat journeys. That's one way we can. And also I feel that tourism needs to be one of our main focuses, like you've got the gardens also that people can come and see. And we need to attract more people and foot traffic to the CBD, which will increase the business flow. And by having festivals and making it more attractive even to young people. And also highlight, you know, the Claudeline showgrounds where they have been used and bringing X into Hamilton. So this would make Hamilton a lot more attractive for the young people and older people too with tourism.
Okay, Guy, what's the next box number?
Number one.
Number one. Okay, we've got S for Saera. With several tertiary institutions here, what can be done to steam the brain drain?
That's what's on the screen to your right, can you see it? And also down here, also over here.
S for Saera or S for Sam? Oh, sorry.
My answers are pretty simple, 24.
Is your mic turned on?
Yep.
We'll borrow Rudy's mic just because I've just had another message come through. He may need to borrow Rudy's mic. We'll restart the timer.
How's that?
That works a lot better. Let's go.
Thank you.
Yep, Rudy, when you are.
Okay, we've got that sorted. My answers are pretty simple and straight to the point. So I'm not going to hold you up. We need to make Hamilton a city people want to stay in, avoid housing. Affordable housing, fair rates, good jobs and a strong community facilities. If young people can build their future here, they will stay here.
Okay, Sarah, what's the next box number? Oh, Jack wants to do another button before we get here. You'll be using up all your buttons.
Oh, have I? Okay. Okay, we need to steam the brain drain by creating better opportunities here in Hamilton. One way is to reduce the rental that a lot of the university students are paying. And also I find it's a shock in this country that 200 people a day are leaving this country due to the slash, cut and burn for the golden Visa card. We're taking care of the rich and taking care of land like, you know, landlords, but we're doing nothing about our youth to create a better future for them with better jobs. And also like has been shared before, we need to go into schools, take an interest in the young ones growing up. And I believe a mayor needs to be in the school where the action is happening. And also when kids leave schools, I think it's vital that we find jobs and we encourage them into employment and who they really are in society. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, what's the next box number?
Have we done 17?
No, we haven't done that yet. She can join the military, but we can do that.
I enjoy this trivia around ages.
Oh, yes. Well, if you are 17 in the army, they put a star on your ring slide to tell the bar you're a minor.
I just wanted to go into the army.
Okay. Okay, we need to steam the brain drain by creating better opportunities here in Hamilton. One way is to reduce the rental that a lot of the university students are paying. And also I find it's a shock in this country that 200 people a day are leaving this country due to the slash, cut and burn for the golden Visa card. We're taking care of the rich and taking care of land like, you know, landlords, but we're doing nothing about our youth to create a better future for them with better jobs. And also like has been shared before, we need to go into schools, take an interest in the young ones growing up. And I believe a mayor needs to be in the school where the action is happening. And also when kids leave schools, I think it's vital that we find jobs and we encourage them into employment and who they really are in society. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, what's the next box number?
Have we done 17?
No, we haven't done that yet. She can join the military, but we can do that.
I enjoy this trivia around ages.
Oh, yes. Well, if you are 17 in the army, they put a star on your ring slide to tell the bar you're a minor.
I just wanted to go into the army.
Okay, we've got U for uniform. Do you support increasing the number of wheelchair accessible bus stops?
I absolutely do. I'm very passionate about ensuring that we have good accessibility for people with mobility challenges and disabilities here in our city. Our council has been increasing the number of accessible bus stops over the last few years, putting in shelters as well. I think we've put in close to 50 over the last 12 months in terms of new shelters. And it's also important though that we work with regional council to ensure that the bus drivers are well-trained. So that when someone with a wheelchair is getting on to a bus, that the bus driver will kneel the bus and let the ramp down. Because unfortunately, that doesn't always happen. We need to ensure that people always feel like they can travel easily and safely and with dignity.
Okay, next up, John. What box number?
20, if we have an answer.
Oh, yes, the good old drinking age until the mid 90s. Okay, we've got J for Juliet. Last year, Kini Tuhaiti called for, was it?
Koutahi.
Koutahitanga or moving forward together. Sorry, just a moment while I can read this. How would you bring the concept into the role if elected?
Groups such as Kini Tanga in various parts of Waikato Tainui have considerable mana presence and resources in the region. They could have considerable and transparent influence on council without special treatment. For instance, Waikato Tainui could financially support a paid representative to speak in the public forum of every council meeting. Letting councillors and the wider public know their position on issues impacting the city. As people know, a lot of times council forum is a bit of a ghost town with tumbleweeds going through. So they could have a considerable influence just by showing up. Councils and governments should avoid getting into partnership and that applies to public-private partnership. Such partnerships create a perception and a reality that those within the partnership are getting special treatment relative to those outside the partnership. And yeah, governments getting involved in partnership is a threat to our traditions of equality before the law.
Okay, seven questions down and we've got a new list order. Tim, what's your next box number?
Have we had number eight yet, Tenaka?
Sorry?
Have we had number eight yet, Tenaka? I am old enough to remember. Tenaka Bushi.
Well, and apparently then she took her husband's name for marriage.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. However, the first It's in the Bad TV female counterpart was Heather Ecclestone, who now is now is Heather Koski. Who never had any television experience before being married.
Okay, and what's her favourite recipe?
I don't know. You probably have a better idea. Okay, we've got Y for Yankee. How robust are consultation processes used to hear from residents around decisions?
We're obviously talking about what applies now. Actually, I think we're pretty good. We do reach out to the public. We've already had mention of the fact that there are public forum opportunities for most of our meetings, both full council and individual committees. We had a pretty thorough round of engagement before our long-term plan last year. And I agreed with a comment that was made earlier that we do need to get out into the community even more. If I'm the mayor, I'm hoping to have a councillor who would take charge of community engagement. To go out and connect to some of those communities who feel that they don't have access to us and who might feel intimidated about coming along to the council chamber. Because it is important that we have that engagement with them. It is important that they both understand the decisions that we are making. It is important that they both understand the decisions that we are making and that we understand the concerns that they might have. But since it's asking how robust are the processes, I actually think we do reasonably well, but we could do better.
Okay, thanks for that. John, what's your next box number?
Um, number five.
Number five? No problem. Okay, we've got P for Papa. How do you feel about the government's plan to create an independent arbiter for code of conduct complaint processes?
Uh, very concerned. I think the code of conduct needs to be reformed. We need to have very clear rules about where the line is. So I would be reviewing the situation about sort of prohibition on criticizing council staff. I think councillors should be criticizing council staff. Might want to draw a line that you're not going to criticize them about their weight or their hairstyle, but focus on the issues. I think the code of conduct process, especially one run down of Wellington, could be used for political persecution of councillors. We often get very subjective, um, and rules which could lead to double standard selective enforcement and sort of two tier policing of code of conduct complaints. So I'm very much wary that it could become a weapon to suppress criticism of council.
Okay, Rachel, what's the next box number? Uh, we have that, but we've got twenty seven. Okay, we've got X for X-ray. Being in a position of authority, how do you feel about council making a stand on national and international issues?
My view is that the council should speak when the local impact is clear and all statements must be thoughtful and not for the sake of the performance.
Okay, Sarah, what's the next box number?
Have we done twenty four?
No, we haven't, but we can do that one.
Excellent, thank you.
Age of where if you're a student of the arts, you're known that you need to have parental income mentioned.
Independence.
For that one, yes. So yeah, mine will be quite like that, could be like that for the dolls. Uh, so we've got T for Tango. What should we do with the Captain Hamilton statue?
Right, good question. So I think it's really important that we consult with Waikato Tainui in terms of where Captain Hamilton goes. But also work with them on ensuring that there's a full narrative because we need to show the full history of Captain Hamilton, including Waikato Tainui's perspective on that. And so I do think that he could be reinstated somewhere, but it needs to be the right place. Outside of the council building is not the right place. Outside the council building should be art that unites people, that inspires people and brings people together. There will be a suitable, I suspect a suitable place, but yeah, consultation, genuine consultation on that is absolutely critical.
Okay, Rudy, what's next box number?
It's gonna be the seven.
Uh, already been taken, but it's neighbor next door, six is still left. Yep, okay, we'll do Ewa. Okay, so we've got A, uh, so we've got AA for double A batteries. What can the council do to be more transparent with the public over its undertaking and decisions?
Well, right now, council is often seen as operating behind closed doors, although it isn't, but it's the perception. People don't feel fully informed or involved in the decisions that are being made in council. We can change that by using electronic tools to communicate effectively with the public. That's how the world is going. And if we start now, we'll be able to engage with more and more and more and more people. Imagine live Q and A sessions, a simple dashboard and even AI driven updates that make council information clear and accessible to everybody. And that's the key. It has to be accessible to each and every citizen of our lovely city.
Feels like, uh, we've got a button from John followed by Sarah.
Uh, I think trans, improving transparency is one of the most important things in council. I've got a few ideas for that. The website needs a revamp. The search function needs to work so we could find the projects we're actually interested in. You often find what you're not looking for on there and often you find something more concerning than what you're looking for. We need to have proactive release policy. So we shouldn't have to hunt around using official information app requests to find basic information. Council needs to put out less cartoon heavy brochures and put some bullet points of key facts. How many speed bumps, how much it's going to cost, how long it's going to disrupt your road. Fully searchable PDF documents and council agendas. So we can search for keywords with hit hyperlinks to full project plans, an interactive online map of suburb by suburb spending on something like road resurfacing. And a rapidly updated, clear and easily searchable log of councillors voting and attendance records at council meetings.
God, it does sound like the books are about to be opened along with the website.
Sarah? Actually, there were some really good ideas in there that I agree with, including making it easier to search for things on our website, which right now can be challenging, but also, you know, finding things within past agendas. Right now, you can't actually search for keywords within a agenda database to find something in a meeting and it can be really difficult. Something else that I'd like to do is our long term plan, which talks about what the council intends to spend on, uh, spend money on over the next ten years. It's really impenetrable. It's large, long, and a lot of it is accounting talk. And actually it doesn't break down when you look at, for example, our community services. How much do we spend on the zoo versus how much we spend on looking after FMG Stadium? Or looking after our sports parks? It doesn't have that breakdown. Instead, it talks about community services, personnel costs, professional costs. You know, it just breaks it down in accounting speak with stuff that's not really meaningful to people. That's got to change.
Gee, so I'm not going to file the, file the text data like how we do to the IRD. We kind of actually have our books nicely detailed. Gee, my councillor would absolutely love you. Uh, Jack, what's the next box number?
Um, Z.
Uh, we don't do, that's a letter number.
Ten?
Yep, we can do ten. Okay, we've got N for November. Who is someone from within the community who you feel best exemplifies the positive attribute, was it attribute of the Waikato that deserves more recognition and why?
Recognition, like you mean, community wise? I think it would be someone who idealistically represents the community where it's really coming from. Like with me, with the people's voice, I think you've got to be there where walk a mile in people's shoes. So to me, it would be someone who exemplifies a heart for the people of Hamilton, who understands the homelessness, who understands the pain of suffering on the street and this sort of thing. So to me, it would be someone who's actually a youth advocate, someone who has the heart of Hamilton in mind. Yeah.
Okay, next up, Guy, what's the, your next box number?
Nine.
Nine, and I think you're probably going to have to swap out. Oh, no, nine's been taken.
Yeah, Rudy did nine.
Eleven?
Yep, we can take eleven. That works perfectly. Okay, we've got K for Kitty Kitty Gua. How can council work to counter, no, sorry. How can candidates work to counter disinformation from other candidates or councillors?
Good question. Maybe the best way is to counter misinformation with facts, transparency and calm communication. I rely on audited council reports and open dialogue, not rumours or spin. Voters deserve honesty.
Okay, we are fourteen questions down and got a new list order. Guy, what's your next box number? Because you're at the top of this list. Yeah.
Feels special now. Twenty four.
Uh, no, that's already been taken, but you name it's neighbour of twenty five or neighbour's twenty three.
Twenty three.
Okay, we've got letters A B for the All Blacks. The CBD is dying is a catchphrase locals have been claiming for years. In your view, what could the council do to either lift the fortunes of CBD businesses or change the public, that public view?
Well, we all agree that our CBD is in need of fresh energy. The council, the council, the council can help with red tape for new businesses, supporting housing in the city centre, making it a safe, attractive place for families. If people feel confident and welcome, the CBD will thrive again.
Okay, Sarah, what's the next box number?
Let's do twenty five.
Twenty five. And for those who might remember, it's the age that the car insurance exists tends to usually drop at. Okay, we've got A for Alpha. The loss of the Founders Theatre is one of the result of cutting ongoing maintenance budget over successive councils to keep rates low. How do you approach the need to balance rate changes and ongoing maintenance of city assets? Or is there an acceptable amount of loss of assets voters should accept in return for lower rates?
I think it's absolutely critical that we are maintaining our core infrastructure to begin with, ensuring that we repave our roads and reseal them in a timely way to ensure that they don't get further damage and that costs more in the longer run actually, if you don't do that in a timely way. And maintaining our footpaths, maintaining our water infrastructure, which has been severely under invested in for decades. In terms of community assets as well, it's critical that we do maintain them when we move. There have been some however, which have been handed on to council from community groups and they've been in very poor condition and our council has decided to demolish some. Like there's been one in a small community house, gosh, it's down by the river. But it wasn't particularly well used and the cost of then reinstating that or rebuilding it and fixing it would have been significant. So we have to be sensible as well with some of these legacy community buildings.
Okay, Jack, what's, uh, we've got a button from Rudy?
Yeah, can I answer that?
Go here.
Yeah, so the Founders Theatre, the whole issue was that it was totally preventable to have it demolished. The council actually neglected maintenance and wanted the Founders Theatre demolished. There was grandiose plans with the new regional theatre and it was always seen that the founders who used the fly in the ointment. So they wanted to demolish because of a non-existent earthquake risk. In 2020, I begged to save the old girl and it would have cost $2.9 million to do that, not the exaggerated 20 million that they had on the books. We can't sacrifice our cultural gems. So as mayor, I'll put an end to that. We will have really well thought out data before we just demolish stuff that are precious to our city.
Okay, Jack, what's the next box number?
Fourteen?
Yep, we can do fourteen. And actually you could get the drivers lost dead if you were a child of a farmer at one stage. Apparently, not like I've seen in a road code or anywhere. So it might have been pre nineteen seventy three when I saw a road code which had the, it was when we went to meet. So we've got Q for Quebec. What are your views on the legislative inability to remove elected members whose actions bring the council into disrepute repeatedly?
I think you would have to study the facts to see in what area they were reaching the code of conduct or legislative areas. Because I've always been a truther and sometimes bringing out the truth might cause people to get upset and might cause the government, you know, particularly with hate speech and this sort of thing. I think there's two sides to every story. So I think legislative inability to remove elected members needs to be transparent and honest because we need to know in what law have they breached and are they telling the truth according to their own conscience? So I think legislation can be dangerous at times because in today's world, everything's extreme. It's out there, the world's on fire. We need to be truthless and honest with people and we need to represent people where they're coming from.
Okay, Rachel, what's the next box number?
What's next?
Oh, there's three, four, six, twelve, thirteen, fifteen.
Toro, Toro is fine.
No problem. Okay, we've got E for the East Coast Main Truck Line. The only, only thing you can sit there and say in both the Waikato and the Bay of Plenty, they share in common. How do you weigh up the balance between commuters who travel by car and commuters who choose buses, bikes or walking and what they need in terms of infrastructure?
Uh, so transport isn't binary and Hamilton needs a layered infrastructure, safe cycleways, safe footpaths, reliable buses and roads that work. We need to design for how people move, an integrated transport system that prioritizes how people move, doesn't prohibit important activities and that is delivered within a budget.
Okay, next up, Tim, what's your next box number?
So you said a moment ago which numbers were left. Um, have we had twelve?
No, we haven't, so let's do twelve. Okay, we have Z for Zulu, a famous letter that all New Zealand registered planes start with. Central government has been making a number of changes to the role councils undertake. How would you approach constant change when making decisions on behalf of the community?
Yeah, interesting, challenging question. And you're right that successive governments do quite often shift the goalposts for local government, which can be both problematic and also expensive. One of the things that springs to mind is we have what would appear to be the likelihood of the current government introducing rates capping. And there hasn't been a lot of discussion of that during the campaign, but there should be because the implications of that are massive. And I would approach it if that happened by saying, right, we do everything we can to cut our costs, operate as efficiently as possible, ensure that we are delivering our core services well. And then we go to central government and say, well, if you have taken away the source of funding for a whole lot of other things that you expect us to do and we need to build a whole lot of houses, we need to fix the infrastructure that in many cases is inadequate and aging, you need to show us how you're going to replace what you've taken away from us. So let's have good cooperation between central and local government to do the right things for our, for our city.
Okay, next up, John, what's your next box number?
Uh, do we still have nine?
Fortunately not.
What do we have left?
Four, six, thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty one, twenty two, twenty six.
I'll go twenty six.
Okay, we have M for Mike. What are your views on lobby groups' involvement like the Taxpayers Union or Greenpeace in local body politics?
Uh, so the word lobby often has an implication that it's happening behind closed doors. Um, I'm all for open public addresses and public forums and people sending in documents to council where everyone can publicly see who. council where everyone can publicly see who's sending it in and what their position is. The things happening behind closed doors, I'm very concerned about meetings that aren't on the public record and we don't know what's discussed and who's behind them. So I'm concerned from that perspective, but if they want to do it publicly, that's fine. And yeah, generally very concerned of anything that's happening out of the public eye and groups getting special treatment. Yep, so I'm going after the Taxpayers Union for their smearing of all the candidates who didn't sign their pledge, even candidates who do want to keep rates under control and yeah, increase transparency in council. Just because you didn't sign their pledge doesn't mean we're not on the side of the rate pass.
Such as trying to have rates kept to the price increase of bean butter in the last 12 months might be one good example of free-to-be failure. It hasn't even moved me if it's less than 50 cents for a block. Whereas our cow's milk counterpart has been ridiculous. Rudy, what's next box number?
All right, let's start off with one, two, three, four. You tell me which one I can get.
You can get four.
Which one?
Four.
Four. Oh, wow, it used to be that H, some time ago. Good, you tell me which initial and then we'll go.
D for Delta.
G for? D for Dutch?
Oh, you knew that, that works. So not what's used in the phonetic alphabet, but that's all good. So D for Delta, council has a role in place-making and community activation. What, what was the last community event you attended and have you been involved in helping setting up community events?
Right, so community events, Balloons Over Waikato is always the one that draws me mostly. And I'm a keen photographer, so I spend every early morning and I'm out there. It's one of those focus points for our city. It's a real, and we must never lose this thing. We, we must work diligently to keep it. So that's one of the things that I attend. And then I also go to something which is called a community. It's where the community gets together and has a supper together. And it helps me to understand and connect with people on the ground, to hear their aspirations, their thoughts, their worries, their concerns. And you know what? It just also helps them to understand I'm one of them. I'm just a normal Hamiltonian, exactly the same as anybody else out there. That helps me immensely.
Okay, we've got twenty-one questions.
Could I rebuttal?
Oh, yep, we've got a button from Rachel.
Not a rebuttal, but an answer, is it? Yep.
Yeah, that's what the button cards are for.
Oh, sorry, yes, okay. The last event I went to was the vigil for Charlie Kirk last night in Garden Place and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to explain here why. I went to that event because democracy depends on safe disagreement and violence is never the answer. I attended because showing up, however difficult the subject. Been over suffrage day and pay. Of needing to feel seen and to be heard. In my time as the CEO of Koti, we managed many of the Pacific Nation Festival in Hamilton. This was a huge undertaking for a small provider. So I know that from a community perspective, it is usually a small but mighty team with a multiplier of 10 in terms of impact.
Okay, so as I said just before, 21 questions down, another seven to go. Sarah, what's next box number?
Tacoma Iwa. Nineteen, right?
Yep, we can do that one. We've got G for golf. What role do you see council having in supporting the local creative sector?
Right, so recently, very recently, council approved an arts and infrastructure policy, which will ensure that when we're doing infrastructure projects, big or small, art is taken into account at the beginning in the design. And there are examples where council has already done that. For example, the transport centre where the buses come, we've put in murals and it really brightens that place up, it makes it more vibrant. And the mural on the bathroom is done by a local artist. So part of that policy is actually ensuring that we use local artists as well, but also continue with our grants and ensure that, I think there is a role for us to do better in the space of, of supporting our local creative arts because they add so much to our city and make it a place that people want to visit and are proud to live in.
Okay, Rudy, what's next box number?
Okay, so we do one, two, three, four and a zero five.
No, but we've got six.
Five, six, six.
Six of us. Okay, we've got L for Lima. What are your views on political party involvement in local body politics?
Oh, that's a good one. Political parties in local councils, they actually crush the independence of councillors. Councillors become party puppets, not free thinkers. I saw this in South Africa, parties enforce discipline which can curb misconduct. That's one thing that parties can do if it's on a party basis. But it stifles debate on issues like water fluoridation and a number of other things. Hamilton needs councillors who serve ratepayers, not party lines. As mayor, I champion independent voices, ensuring decisions reflect our city's heart, not political agendas for a fairer, united Hamilton. And just to make sure, I'm not affiliated to any party. Thank you.
I do read your standing, I'm not a political bin at the last election, but for this election, that can be what it is. As long as we can send reservation letters, I'm sure voters will be happy. John, what's next box number?
What have you got left?
Oh, we've got thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-one or twenty-two.
I'll go thirteen.
Okay. Okay, we've got, was it question I for Igloo. Do you have any suggestions for other ways council can increase revenue streams without burdening the ratepayer any further?
Glad I got that question. Right, first we can disband the new water company and then we can sell water services to Waikato District Council and give them a better deal than they're currently getting from Watercare. The other idea for raising increased revenue is we need to look at public liability insurance. Does our chief executive have it? Does, does our senior management at council have it? Do our contractors and consultants have public liability insurance? With the amount of unwise spending, wrongdoing, project budget blowouts, blunders and worts that occurred in the last decade, public liability insurance claims could be a treasure trove of income for council. We can also look at reclaiming GST from central government and charging rates on central government. And I also think we need to look at funding more of the city's activities by donations and therefore we can avoid sending more tax money down to Wellington.
Rebuttal.
You mean a button?
Well, what's the other one?
Defer.
Def, oh, I see. And we don't have a rebuttal.
But you can use button card.
No, I've already used my button. I've used two buttons.
I've used both.
I'd use them up. She doesn't read any questions left. I'd use it if you've got something to say.
That's all right.
Okay, Guy, what's next box number?
Seventeen.
No, that's already been taken, but you can take its neighbour eighteen, the voting age.
Eighteen.
Okay, we've got R for Romeo. When was the last time you used public transport or a cycle lane in Hamilton?
I'd like to defer that one.
Which candidate would you like to defer that question to?
Tim.
Give extra answers to him, Tim.
Okay, I actually finally got to go on Tahuia about two months ago, which I've been wanting to go on for a very long time, but it never really worked for me. There's no particular reason to, but I enjoyed going up to Auckland with my wife early one morning. And also I'm an occasional user of the buses. Fortunately, there's a bus quite, a bus stop quite close to our home and it's very convenient when I'm able to use it. Particularly last year when I had an operation and I wasn't able to drive for a few weeks, it was really handy to have the, the access to the bus service.
Okay, Jack, what's next box number?
Whatever we've got there.
Do you want the old driver's licence age of 15, the old voting age of 21 or my birthday at 22?
Twenty-two.
Okay. And you've got a little bit of a head start, you've got a month to get the card, put the card in the post. Okay, we've got C for Charlie. How do you feel about the continuation of Māngar Maori representation in committees alongside Akiri Keneda Maori ward councillors?
I'm in favour of that so long as it's defined by not the trickle up but the trickle down. Because with Kaing O Rua, in terms of the housing and so forth, have they put the housing in place for their own people? So because I was with Alex Phillips and the Mana Arikii Marae many years ago, we had visions of the Madonna. And it was told me that unless the Iwi's unite together for the future, there was going to be so much suicide, so much family destruction. This is what's happening now and all the tribes have to come together. We have to have the leaders, the Māori people being able to present participatory democracy. But I think as a multicultural liaison officer representing all cultures, this is something that applies not just to Maori people, but all cultures together. It's time to unite New Zealand as one and represent participatory democracy, Maori, non-Maori, all together. Thank you.
Okay, Rachel, what's next box number?
Whatever's the highest that you've got left.
Ah, so the voting age, my grandma first voted in 1949. Twenty-one. And she's never voted under her maiden name either because she got married the same year, which if you think about that now, that's very unheard of. Okay, we've got H for hotel. No, no, H for Hamilton. What is your favourite local artist, visual artist, musician, filmmaker, writer, et cetera, and why?
I admire many artists, but the artists that I admire most are those that help people feel seen, heard and valued.
Okay, Tim, your choice of one box number, the old driver's licence age of 15. What box number would you like?
Well, thank you, Selwyn. As I got my driver's licence when I was 15, let's go with that one.
Thank you for joining the club on that one. I also was a 15-year-old person getting the driver's licence.
I was so small, I think I looked through the steering wheel, not over it.
I know, I've always looked over it for me, but you know, these are the tall Jameson family. We've got V for violin. Now, it's been in place for a while. What are your thoughts on the visitor fee for Hamilton Gardens?
It's been an outstanding success, as I was confident it would be. I'm sorry we didn't do it earlier. It's absolutely crazy that we have wealthy tourists coming in from overseas who for a very long time got in for nothing and they were subsidised by the Hamilton ratepayer, who has been paying all of the maintenance and development costs. We have outstanding gardens in Hamilton. We can all be so proud of them. We want to continue developing them. This is a very logical way of ensuring that the funding is there for that. And even at $20, which is the current rate for people outside Hamilton, Hamilton ratepayers don't pay that way because they are still paying through their rates. It's a drop in the bucket for a lot of them. Many American tourists would say it's probably the cost of a price of a packet of chewing gum. One thing I would like to develop further, because I actually think that the cost could go up and should do if we want to continue developing gardens, is introducing a combo package to give people the option to get a cheaper deal for the zoo and our gardens to ensure they go to both attractions. Because we have one of the finest zoos in the southern hemisphere and we need to promote it as well.
And I might be ending up at Hamilton Zoo before I end up at Wellington Zoo, which is in the suburb I actually live in. If I'll be honest, I'm Venus, it's awesome.
I live very near to the zoo and I enjoy hearing the monkeys.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break and then afterwards we'll get back for hard-hitting questions. And now, got to figure out how to make the, make the video thing work. There we are, 10-minute intermission. Yes. Okay, ready to roll. Okay, and welcome back to It's in the Ballot. And literally, as you mentioned, we're about to come on back on. The candidates arrived, so let's get ready for hard-hitting questions.
... territorial authorities for the Waikato region. And the lesson from that around emergency planning is that emergency planning must still be local. It must honour local knowledge, protect vulnerable groups and respond to lived realities. It can't just be a bureaucratic model led from Wellington. So those are my thoughts on the Emergency Management Bill before government. Thank you.
Can I also answer that?
Uh, you will be answering. Yeah, funny enough, you're next.
Okay, to replace civil defence, emergency, we have four Rs. We have risk management, readiness, response and recovery. We've also got greater roles and responsibilities, local authorities, Maori involvement and community engagement. So when there's a civil defence problem like flooding or whatever, everyone needs to be involved. The community's involved, the local authorities, police are involved. So this emergency response is a brilliant idea. Thank you.
Okay, Tim.
Yeah, look, I agreed with what Rachel said before, so I'll just echo those comments and add that the preamble to this question says currently new housing subdivisions are not required to make housing accessible to the front door.
That's hard-hitting question number two.
Oh, is it? I beg your pardon. I'm so sorry. I thought, right, okay.
Hard-hitting question number one.
Right, okay. I saw the, the bit that wasn't, I'm sorry, well, I've used it most of the time.
We're restarting.
No, no, well, I have already echoed Rachel's comments and I apologise for that mistake. Not my finest moment, but we're all allowed a few whoopsies during the campaign. And I must admit, I am not familiar with all of the ins and outs of the bill, so I'm just going to leave it at that. And that's an epic fail on that question, sorry.
At least, at least you're honest.
Yeah.
Uh, John?
I've been following select committees quite closely for the last year about local government issues and didn't see this one come up. But it hasn't reached select committee yet. It's not a draft bill. It's just a consultation done a few months back by civil defence, which is now rebranded National Emergency Management Agency, or NEMA. So it's still quite vague. I usually criticise these things and get into the details once there are clear bills and clauses. So a lot of this is fairly, yeah, vague, you know, enable higher minimum standards of emergency management, minimise disruption to essential services. They talk about Marais having more involvement, which is fair enough, if they're going to be a, a safe site during an emergency. My concerns would be things like whole of society approach, which can be code word for a lot of group things going to be happening. And I also have concerns about the, um, ensure agencies have the right powers available and what are those powers and what are the details there? I'd have concerns about when the details come out with that.
Okay, Guy.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this bill either, but I would support it as long as it doesn't put pressure on, financial pressure on the residents of Hamilton.
Okay, Brudi.
Okay, the new Emergency Management Bill is a step forward in making sure communities like Hamilton are better prepared and protected. It replaces the old Civil Defence Act and puts more focus on local leadership and clear responsibilities during emergencies, even when they are undeclared. I support the idea of strengthening community resilience, but I'm watching closely to ensure that Hamilton isn't burdened with our proper funding. We need practical tools, not just policy. If this bill helps Hamilton respond faster and recover smarter, then it's a move in the right direction. I did a proposal to Parliament in this regard. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah.
Thank you. Emergency management is a critical function of councils and often it's actually overlooked by residents because most of the time everything's okay. And it's only when things go wrong that people really pay attention to how well our councils are prepared for emergencies. The bill is about clarifying responsibilities and also clarifying the role of community and Iwi as well, which I think is really important. What's also important is that as a council, we don't overlook. This is a core part of our business. In the last term, we have funded a generator at Claudlin's to ensure that there will be power at one of our key gathering points because we need to have gathering points that are able to host people on both sides of the river in case something happens to one of our bridges. We've also funded other work to help our communities prepare better.
Okay, let's get on to hard-hitting question number two. Currently, new housing subdivisions are not required to make housing accessible to the front door for disabled users such as wheelchairs. What is your policy stance on making new subdivisions as accessible requirements so wheelchair users can get to the front door? And John, you get to go first.
I'm all for wheelchair accessibility being standard in all publicly accessible council buildings. I've had a wheelchair user in my family growing up, so grew up in a fully accessible house and there's a lot of advantages to that, not just wheelchair users, but buggies, trolleys get in the buildings, fewer trip hazards, moving furniture through wider doorways, that kind of thing. Given the aging population and that a number of governments around the world are engaged in mass debilitation activities, it would be wise for developers to invest in building more accessible homes as a matter of course. However, I'm for leading by example instead of leading by using government powers for coercion. This is also a private property rights issue. A man's home is, is his castle. And if that man wants a moat and a drawbridge or a few steps on the way to his front door, that man has that right.
Okay, Brudi.
I was caught napping at the drawbridge. Right, so now, to answer this very question, I believe that accessibility really matters, but fairness does too. Forcing private owners to build wheelchair access to every front door is not practical and it's not affordable. Instead, I support incentives and a case-by-case funding through WINS or council grants, especially where disabled residents live or visit. In public housing and community space, accessibility should be a non-negotiable. But in private subdivisions, we need flexibility. Encouraging inclusive design without imposing blanket rules, not fair. Let's build a city that welcomes everyone without punishing those who simply trying to build a home.
Okay, Sarah.
Accessibility is really important because we want everyone to be included within our community. In terms of requiring this, I'd have to do work to find out whether we could legally require that there's accessibility to the front door for all new homes built and new subdivisions. If there is, then I think actually doing things well from the beginning, when you're designing something from scratch, is always much cheaper than retrofitting it. So, and I don't think it would cost a lot more in most cases to achieve this. So I think it would be sensible. But also, if we can't require it, then we can work with our key developers, which council has a good relationship with, to talk to them about this being an important thing that we'd like to see from them and providing some guidance in terms of design to them.
Okay, Guy.
Right, accessibility, good question. It's about fairness. Everyone should be able to knock on the front door, whether they use a wheelchair, a walker or a stroller. I support setting sensible, accessible requirements for new subdivisions. So we build communities for all Hamiltonians. Done right, this doesn't mean, done right, this doesn't have to add a huge cost. It means smarter design from the start.
Okay, Jack.
Accessibility to me is vital, not only for disabled people, but for people with walkers. I notice we have a problem at crossings too because disabled people have been killed in this city. That happened just last year. And I think we need a safer driving campaign that applies to everyone because I see crashed cars in this city and people don't show consideration towards one another anymore. They don't indicate we have dangerous drivers on our roads. So I think it's high time we reduce the, um, the travelling speed that cars go at. And I think with speed bumps and access to buses and this sort of thing, I think that's vital also. We have a driving problem in this city. There needs to be accessibility and drivers need to slow down. Thank you.
Okay, and next up, Rachel.
It's my understanding that there has been reasonable debate and advocacy with some longevity around universals' design standards, including this particular issue. My position is simple. Design standards must reflect real life and accessibility should be inclusive.
Okay, Tim.
I'm sorry. No, thank you. Definitely desirable and to be encouraged wherever possible. I agree with some of the other speakers who've said it may not always be feasible, perhaps because of the topography of the land and that sort of thing. But where possible, definitely, we should be trying to encourage it. And in particular, we should expect it of social housing providers. And if you, for instance, take into consideration Kainga O Rua as a major state house provider, many of their tenants are often people with disabilities. We shouldn't do everything that we can to encourage them and go much further than just enabling the wheelchair user to get to the front door, but actually ensuring that within the house itself or the flat unit, whatever it is, that that becomes accessible by lowering cupboards, by ensuring that shower door handles are able to be opened easily. Some of these things can be done at virtually no extra cost and they just aren't thought of. So we need to be providing all the encouragement and awareness of the needs of our disabled people to ensure that they can live independently, which many can't for simple reasons such as shower doors being too high or whatever.
And for those who are wondering, my friend Tony, as any of you may know, Tony is the one who puts us up every time we do It's in the Ballot in Hamilton. He's in the wheelchair. And talking to GJ Gardeners, um, the cost to make it accessible is no different to having a step put in between the road and the house. And that particular aspect, so there's no extra cost for that one on a flat housing subdivision. subdivision, just to put some context there. Now, for this Hamilton city, such as Newtown, where I live, next to the zoo, yes, that would be quite expensive, as you guess, it would have the zigzag going up the hill. But yes, yeah, topography, yeah. And it's a, yeah, it's a good example in there. Okay, so let's get on to hard hitting question number three. Okay, what is your position on retaining Hamilton City Council's Kiri Kiri Rua Maori ward and the Waikato Regional Councils Na Tai Kiutu Maori constituency? And why do you hold that position? And Tim, you get to go first.
Okay, well, we're being asked this question a lot in the campaign and the first thing I want to point out is we won't make that decision, the voters will. And we will respect and abide by whatever decision is made on the continuation of Maori wards. The second thing is I am on record of holding a very strong view that there should be no wards whatsoever, so not just, not a Maori ward, but not an east ward or a west ward, for the very clear reason that I believe our current system is fundamentally undemocratic. And in fact, Maori are currently most discriminated against in this way because they can only elect three of the 15 people who sit around the Hamilton City Council and make big decisions on their behalf, including how their rates are spent. There's an old maxim, no taxation without representation. I believe that every resident and rate payer in Hamilton should be able to elect every councillor who decides how their rates are spent. So for that reason, I would like to go to a citywide position, but also to introduce community boards, retain the Maori Maori system. The community boards might well have two iwi community boards where I think actually they'd have much stronger input into council decision making.
Okay, next up, Rachel.
I support Maori wards as part of democratic representation. You know, democracy is about fair representation and we all know that Maori have been underrepresented in many of our institutions, including local government. There may be better ways to ensure a fair voice for Maori and others, but this is what is on the table right now. And if there are any changes, that those changes must be guided by respectful consultation.
Okay, John.
Maori wards is a constitutional change about how people are represented in council and that kind of constitutional change should go to a public referendum before any decisions made. The decision to institute Maori wards in the first place should have gone to a full public referendum and as far as I'm aware, that didn't happen. I view equity, I view equality before the law as foundational to the government in New Zealand and that comes through Article Three of the Treaty of Waitangi and the rights and privileges of British subjects. And you find that in the Imperial Laws Application Act 1988, in Schedule One, which has our constitutional enactments, which are the foundation of New Zealand. I view this issue as by far not the most important issue in this election and I can work with both Maori ward councillors and people who support Maori wards.
Okay, Jack.
I'm with William of Orange Sovereign Citizenship because William of Orange had a new constitution, genuine currency with the First Bank and you had the Rothschilds who backed both sides of the war. He also had treaties with the indigenous peoples of the world. He gave to the Maori the Fakaputanga, which is based on the sovereignty of the chieftainship. If you take sovereignty away from people, human rights, who we really are, you reduce the dignity of people to the class of an animal. I believe it's time that we bring in sovereignty of the chieftainship and honour all people because we're not only talking about indigenous people in this country, we're talking about indigenous people with a two-class system right around the world whereby we're crapping on the poor. So sovereignty is at stake internationally, so participatory democracy needs to come in this country and William of Orange, his sovereignty of the chieftainship needs to be honoured around the world right now. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Sarah.
Since the establishment of the Hamilton Borough Council, which then became Hamilton City Council, four Maori councillors were elected prior to us establishing Maori wards. I think Maori wards are critical for ensuring Maori are represented at the decision-making table and I think they're fair as well because they represent, they're proportionate to the number of people who are enrolled on the Maori roll and they are not discriminatory. You are able to choose whether you're on the Maori roll or not. And Waikato Tainui advocated, along with many members of our community, for these wards and they ensure better representation for Maori at the council table. I also disagree with Tim around the idea of community boards. Hamilton isn't of the size or topography that requires them and they cost a lot of money to run. And we've looked into them and for the very reason of that cost, we did not pursue it further.
Okay, next up, Rudy.
Right, so I might as well have the cat amongst the pigeons. I oppose the Maori wards for a very simple reason. I come from a society where racial segregation was an issue. It was the way of living, it was the way that governments ran, it's the way the departments ran and there was forever racial divide. So I fought against all this sort of nonsense back in South Africa and I escaped the tyranny of that race-based type of government. Now, I know this type of thing fractures our one nation into ethnic silos, undermining merit and equal citizenship under the treaty Article Three. Hamilton's council should unite us as Hamiltonians, not appoint extra voices by ethnicity. As mayor, I will not want to see this because you're... Okay, sorry. Bye bye.
Okay, next up, Guy.
Okay, so there's a referendum. All I can say is I voted yes. The rest is all up to you. Let's keep Maori wards, that's all I can say.
Okay, it's that time of night where we get to have candidates give their closing statements of why they should be getting your number one vote to become the next mayor of Hamilton City Council. Guy, you get to kick off first with your closing statements. You have one minute.
Vote for that guy. First of all, I took on this journey and I've learned so much from the candidates, from the current council. The current council candidates, they have such a big job. I didn't realise how big it was. I take my hat, take my hat off to them and now they want to do it all over again. You need to think about that when you're voting as well. What I can bring is my knowledge in how the process works and due diligence. That's all I can bring to the party. So well done, team.
Okay, next up, John.
This is a critical time as a number of transformational changes are being imposed on society and are impacting our city. Hamilton City Council has been implementing smart city technologies, focusing on managing people's behaviour, creating huge amounts of intergenerational debt and now we have double-digit rates increases to enable the council to borrow more. We've got the water company being created, which is going to borrow billions more and increase water costs for households by three to four times in the next 10 years. All of this needs to be stopped and reversed. I think the alternative is a simple city where we make the bureaucracy less complicated and less expensive, make infrastructure affordable and robust, make council respect people's rights and practise prudent stewardship, rank multiple candidates this election and encourage others to vote. This is an important one.
Okay, next up, Sarah.
This is an important election. We face really big financial challenges as a city with needing to catch up on decades of underinvestment in our water infrastructure in particular. We need to ensure that in facing those challenges, we do it in a way that protects the important services that our city provides, that ensures that we maintain what we have and also focuses on innovative solutions. And I, as a candidate, I'm someone who focuses on solutions. I bring ideas to the table. I collaborate with other people to bring their good ideas to the table and I work with others to turn those into action. I'm someone who works with others, no matter what their political view is, and I work hard to find common ground because I think that is the best way that we can represent our community as a whole. And I will bring that strength to the table as mayor.
Okay, Tim.
I believe that I also have the ability to work with all people of different opinions and we do bring different views to the table and that can be good. It can ensure that we test their ideas. I have considerable experience, particularly in central government, and believe that at this critical time for our city, when we must ensure that we do much better because our financial performance has been very poor in recent years, I think that my contacts with central government politicians on both sides of the House will be to our advantage because we will need to engage very closely with them, particularly if rates capping is brought in. I also have many, many years of active involvement in our community and very strong connections with the wonderful multicultural groups that are in our city, but also our disability sector and many others. And I'm very proud of that. I believe therefore that I have both the reputation of being approachable and accessible and supportive of them, but also the skills that are needed at a critical time for our city.
Okay, next up, Rudy.
Right, well, you've got to pick a leader for our city. You've got to pick somebody that will be able to take our city out of the doldrums where it is. A financial crisis is upon us in our city. What makes me special? Well, I've got a wife that supports me. Her name is Barbara. She's incredible. She supports me and I appreciate that. Other things that I've done, I've studied law at Waikato, contract law, constitutional law, and I know my way around councils because I've spent eight years as a councillor in another city council. I will group the troops together and together we will make this city astonishing. We will turn it around, we'll get our finances sorted and that's the reason why you're going to vote for Rudy De Bruy. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Rachel.
When you vote, you vote for the people that will make decisions for you, your families, your homes, your future. You should know who you are voting for. Please do not do yourself and your communities a disservice by voting for simply a familiar face. Do your research, ask yourself what has this candidate delivered? Choose carefully. Three, the number of sons I have. Nine, the number of children in my family, I'm the eldest. Fourteen, the number of years I spent practising law. Hundreds, the number of council files I have read before providing advice on risk and liability. Millions, the number of dollars I've raised for community projects. A hundred and ninety thousand, about the number of Hamiltonians in need of change. Radical change is needed right now. Change is not a catchphrase, it's an active process that endures. I am that change. Vote for Corales.
Uh, Jack.
Vote for Jack Geelen, father, mother, protector of the city. I serve the King of all kings, the Lord Jesus Christ, and community groups with the people's vision. What skills and experience do I bring to the table? I bring community visioning, polishing Hamilton as a New Jerusalem diamond until it shines forth, bringing people together across cultural, social and economic lines. I promote public engagement, listening to and involving citizens and shaping decisions using listening posts, ensuring transparency and accountability. Grounded like steel, flowing with the wind, with listening posts, creative energy, uniting Hamilton together. So a vote for Jack Geelen is a vote for uniting Hamilton together, the people's voice. And we need to be transparent and honest with our future. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ain't just the little fun part, I haven't done this speech in a very long time because it's been a long time since I've been on the STV election, but when it comes to voting, please don't just look at when it comes to your number one preference vote, but we can second, your third and your fourth preference votes and go all down. Because this election, whoever ends up on top, the decision will be decided by, you know, by second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth preferences, all the way up to 11. Not sure if 12 is going to make any difference because someone has to be eliminated somewhere along the process. So when it comes to voting, make sure you sit down there and think who you'd want to have on the voting paper and make the best use of your ranking selections to get the best possible outcome when it comes to voting. In order to be the winner or be the mayor of Hamilton, on the final iteration, the, was it, candidate has to have at least 50% of the vote plus one. So make sure you get those preferences out when it comes to voting. Can I say thank you to our candidates for putting their feet to the it's in the ballot fire? You've definitely made today a lot more enjoyable than our earlier starts, so that's all right. Can I thank our audience for participating and being here tonight? Can I also thank my camera person for jumping on the cameras at the last minute and making it all work? And can I also thank Henry for being our remote editor, for pulling off all the chyrons, the names and all that remotely? And thank the rest of the it's in the ballot team for the little bits they've done to sit there and pull everything off. We'll be back here tomorrow for Hamilton East. We've got a double debate, so there's part one and part two at both 1pm and 4pm. Let's look forward to seeing you all then. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.